And called the regular, regular meeting of City of Chattahoochee Hills, City Council for July 11th to order. Let the record reflect that we've got all council members except for Ruby Foster, and I don't think we're expecting her tonight because her. Oh, is she on Zoom?
Mr. Rakovich.
I cannot see that from here.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Well, we're hoping to see her on Zoom and we'll update the record if. Yeah, exactly. I'll try to. Robbie, do me a favor and let Dana know if she does come on. I'd like to remind anybody who wants to make a public comment tonight to fill out one of the yellow comment cards, hand them to the handsome gentleman at the table over there. We do have a public hearing tonight, so make sure that you specify if you're having a general comment or if you're wanting to talk about the public hearing item. If you would, please turn off your cell phones and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item tonight is approval of the meeting agenda. We have a couple of changes. Twenty-three dash oh-two-two, which is the T-Sploss thing, is being deferred for a month. We talked about that in the work session. We had some changes to the spec and because of that, the bids are coming in late, so we have not got bids to look at and approve. Similarly, we're deferring twenty-three dash oh-two-six, which is the, the. How would describe that? That's the hotel motel tax thing, the IGA. Because that also came in late enough that nobody got copies really in time to give it a thorough review. And we got that request also from the CDB. They're also wanting to look at it more before they make a recommendation. So if I could get a motion in a second, please, to approve the agenda with those two changes.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the two changes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Anything else? If not, all those in favor of adopting the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Meeting agenda stands approved. Next up is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 6th and the special call meeting of June 21. Can I get a motion and second to approve those minutes, please?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of both of those meetings.
Second. You got it.
We have a motion in a couple of seconds. Any discussion, anything anybody needs changed?
No.
If not, all those in favor of adopting the minutes, both of those sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Minutes stand approved. Got no proclamations tonight. Next up is public comment, which is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council to provide their input and opinions on any matter not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. Again, since we do have a public hearing, please be sure to specify. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone and directly to the council for stating your name and address for the record. You're allowed three minutes for your personal remarks. I assume we have some. I see a lot of cards.
Mayor, first up, Betty.
Betty, if you can lean in a little closer, maybe.
Hello.
There you go. Perfect.
Betty Ferdinand, one zero. Haven't been here well out of forgive. And maybe editor.
Yeah, I see that.
Greg, it just needs to be.
Hang on just one second. We're bringing another microphone up. I think you may be right. And we needed to use Daryl's theory of adjustment too, to get that right where it needs to be for her.
Hello.
There we go.
There we go. I'm good. Thanks.
We want to hear the voice that comes with a pretty smile.
I am basically going to do a mind dump tonight. It has, it's a general comment. For the first time a few days ago, we met our neighbor that resides, well. That was at one zero nine seven five Hutchinson Ferry Road. You know the property. I know the property. His name is Darren. You know Darren. And that was the first time we'd met him, so we were happy to meet him and he shared with us his, his concept for farms. And we were on, on board and excited about it until they got to the part of Airbnb. He called it a farm state, but it's not a farm state. It's Airbnb because there's no farm there. I, we don't mind something being there, but Airbnb just doesn't work for us. They are disruptive and corruptive. And I know you have ordinances now. Short-term lease, long-term lease is very much considered, more considerate of neighbors and the neighborhood. So it got me thinking. So I'm just going to do what I call a mind dump. I hear a lot about Chattahoochee Hills community and being a farm community. What I hear most about is Serenby. So people in Serenby have connected. People that move into the area are connected. I don't hear anything about the rural farmers, the original ones that are here, having a, a way to connect. I could be wrong. I could be missing something. But my thoughts are these. What if? What if the city of Chattahoochee Hills purchased one zero nine seven five Hutchinson Ferry Road? And made it into a farming experience for the local farmers that were here originally and gave permission and was willing to bring other people in their community? What if they had a place there and connected with UGA?
Got thirty, thirty seconds.
Okay, I get extra time for that, right?
Yeah.
Connect with UGA, connect with the church groups, connect with the community, brickwork. Bring in agriculture, tourism. And if you can't get on board with that, I have a whole list of things that it could, that could morph into. If it can't get on board with that, what about the city of Chattahoochee buying it for a fire station? You know, I think, I think Serenby has, I think Serenby has. Okay.
We'll, we'll talk more. I'll find you. I know where you live.
Know where you live. Next, Danine Crawford.
Danine Crawford, five-five-seven-five Cockermill Road. I just have a couple of concerns that citizens have brought before our Chat Hill Citizens Alliance Committee this month. One of them is Ms. Jan Davinport that lives on Jones Ferry Road. It's very concerned about the speeding that is happening on Jones Ferry. I know that that was a topic that was brought up at the work session on Thursday night. I was unable to attend. I apologize for that, but I know that we're trying to get signs through the Georgia GDOT and they are behind by about three years from what my informant is telling me. They're behind about three years on all their projects. So speeding and she has actually purchased a couple of personal slow down signs to post on her property right on the road, just to try to encourage people to go the speed limit. Another thing is the broadband provider that's coming out on Hutchinson Ferry Road. There were up and down the road doing work. Citizens are asking who that provider is. Is that Greystone or is that a different provider? Cause I know Greystone is looking at getting us fiber optic out here, fiber internet next year. And I also just wanted to give everyone an update on our committee. The Chat Hill Citizens Alliance is growing. We've got more members and we are looking at holding some town hall meetings. We've got a lot of projects planned in this next couple of six months. And I just wanted to let everybody know that we really appreciate the support from the city council. We appreciate the support from the city administration and, and helping us grow and helping get our name out there. So if anybody gets an email from info@chatheels.com, that is the Chat Hill Citizens Alliance Group. And we appreciate new members and we really are trying to help be a voice for citizens in the, in the community to speak up. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, I believe the person is Gail Abrahamian.
I'm sure I'm mispronouncing that. Apologize.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and citizens. Gail Abrahamian, it's one twenty-three thirty, Captry Road. After attending the council work session on Thursday, I picked up on some comments that I am concerned about. At the end of the meeting, Laura was asking Tom concerning impact fees and the twenty acre requirement. Wait just a second. Let me hit this button. Well. Oh, wow. I can't get it. It just was what Laura was asking Ms. The mayor about impact fees and the twenty acre requirements. And that a lot of citizens have brought this up and it's been mentioned by Richie several times in the meetings. I would like to ask a few questions on that. One, why are we talking about impact fees now that the movie studio zoning has been passed? Two, why are we wanting to change the UDC again concerning the twenty acres when you changed this in October of 2021? Three, are you truly understanding what Richie has been talking about since 2021? Is this your election campaign now, Laura? I am interested in hearing your response and conversations on these matters. I am hoping that you, that you are included, all of the council personnel in these conversations. Thank you for your time.
Next, Renee Prince.
Mayor, City Council and citizens of Chat Hills. My name is Renee Prince and I live at one three zero one five Hamilton Road. I wanted to speak a moment. Through open records request, I will tell you I have some concerns about some of our leaders. My heart was broken. I will not, I will not say any names, but some of you have not taken your oath seriously. Robert Richardson brought a citizen's concern to the city council the last three months, and each time you've not taken the citizen's concern seriously. You have blown it off and hoping Mr. Richardson would get, give up or go away. I promise standing before you today. It is not going to go away until you have done what he has asked. This concern is legitimate and does not need to be handled lightly like you have done. Mayor, could you explain to Mr. Richardson why you and your city council is ignoring Mr. Richardson's request? Why do I bring this up? Because I did my own research or investigation. I spoke to six out of the seven that who attended the TDR meeting, also gave some of my findings, not only to you all on March the seventh, but also some emails to the city, to the councilwomen. And at a later date to the city attorney on April the fourth. He responded and said, I truly appreciate the time and effort you had put into this. The way I'm handling this investigation is much akin to how evidence is presented to a court during a hearing or trial. I'm relying, relying on the witnesses to the event to give their testimony or side of story and not relying on summaries or hearsay. What a person heard, someone else said. The city attorney thanked me for the statement, but he was only taking statements from folks who was at that meeting. So I did an open records request. Not only was the attendees of the TDR meeting statement there, but also was Dana Richard and, and Sandy Sargent. Also had statements in there. The question of Mr. Lindsay, if Ms. Richard and Ms. Sargent's statement was entered into evidence, why wasn't mine? Wouldn't you consider all three statements to be hearsay? They weren't even at the meeting. And from my understanding, when I spoke to, spoke to Mr. Rakovich, he stated that you were both, that they were both in the office and that no one had had to shut their door because it got a little loud. Can each one of you that gave a statement state that all is true? Or maybe have a little bit of doubt because maybe you were asked to write something else. Also through open records, there are emails that existed between Councilman Searle, Mayor Reed and Robbie Rakovich. Guiding him on his statement.
Thirty seconds.
None of them were presented. So why do they get help to add substance, substance to Robbie's statement? Why is this heavy on my heart? Because Mr. Rakovich brought my name up several times in his statement. And I will tell you, I did not lie on anything that I said or wrote. As a matter of fact, I have already reached out to a company to take a lie detector test and I'm willing to spend that $500. Mayor, City Council, I come before you that you need to do the right thing to allow Robert Richardson's voice to be heard and to treat this as a trial. Counsel, I'm not an attorney, but I truly know from right and wrong, even at the evidence statements. Thank you.
Next, I have a written statement from Robert Richardson. He asked me to read it in record. My name is Robert Richardson and I live at ninety-four twenty-five Hutchinson Ferry Road. For the past three or four months, I have been standing in front of the mayor and city council, asking why my civil rights have been denied and why the city has broken codes. I've had no reply from the city, so tonight I thought I would let Mr. Lindsay read my statement for the record and maybe I will no longer be ignored. I recently polled the city council one simple question. That question was, how many lies are acceptable executive session witness state? Schmidt, Mr. Bettis and Foster all said absolutely none are acceptable. Searle answered my email. Question, slow refuse answer my email. Mr. Rakovich's witness statement contained twenty-one verifiable lies and his statement contradicts every other witness statement. This is not acceptable from a city manager. From the start, the mayor and the city council have been trying to cover this up. Through Open Records Act, I have emails of the mayor telling Mr. Searle what he says took place, yet out of town when this occurred. I have emails of Mr. Searle talking with Mr. Rakovich about this two days after it happened. I have a city employee saying he told me what to say regarding their witness statement. And I have a taped conversation of a city employee admitting to falsifying their witness statement. It seems I was the only one that did not get to speak in this high school level investigation. But by denying me, the city is also saying that both Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Bettis are liars as they can both verify everything I say because they saw it firsthand. The mayor and city council have failed to look at the evidence and have failed not only me, but the people they represent. The city stalled me from getting the emails from open records for three months. I urge the city council to do the right thing and have an open hearing as Georgia code fifty dash fourteen dash one through fifty dash fourteen dash three dictates. If the city does not respond to this request, my next letter will be to the Attorney General's Office. As always, thank you for my three minutes. And that's the last of the public comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next up are our staff reports and we will start with the financial update from the city manager.
Okay, sorry about that. Somebody, strange number was trying to get on Zoom and we know what happens. And that happened, so I was trying to make sure that wasn't happening. But good evening, Mayor, Council, my professional staff, awesome citizens of Chattahoochee Hills. I'm here to give you the financial report, but before I get into the fun stuff, I wanted to do a little recognition real quick because there are some folks online that are related to one of our staff members here. And although he's been here for over seven years. He's not a new staff member, but he's a new police chief. And that's Kevin Degu. His wife Dale is here as well. That's what I was gonna, I'm, I'm calling you out. And some other staff members, we, we didn't get an opportunity. We, he was recognized when, when Chief Little left, we had luncheon and stuff and outgoing lunch and then incoming luncheon for, for Chief Degu. And we, we recognize him in that respect because he's already sworn in. So that's why the council is not going through and the mayor, I mean, the city attorney is not over here swearing in Kevin Degu because he's already been sworn in as a police officer. But I didn't want to miss the opportunity to recognize him because, you know, over the last several years, he's been in a leadership capacity for the city. And he's, he's proven himself very well. And during the accreditation process, which is very, very difficult, tedious, time consuming and very demanding on his time. And he went through that. There's been countless nights and weekends that he has shown up in the city for calls of service because he was needed in a leadership capacity. We know that there's, you know, activity that's happening and, you know, crimes don't happen Monday through Friday between eight-thirty and five, but he responds and he's here. He responds by text, email, phone, in person, and he's just that kind of leader. And I just wanted to recognize him before I got him on financials and just say thanks for, for applying for the job. Kevin, Chief Degu, thanks for, for stepping up and, and being that leader. And we know that you're going to do well and we look forward to you serving us as our police chief, so. And then he gets to give his report tonight. And put your own spin on it, you know, it's, it's yours. You put your own spin on it. The financial report though, this is the, the last, then we're in the new fiscal year, twenty twenty-four as of July first, but this is the last financial report, really. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three that ended on June twenty, June thirtieth. So what I do is I go in and I, you had the financials in front of you, but I take out some of the things at the top, in the top part of the spreadsheet, which is conservation, the federal grant, which is our, which is our, our ARPA funds and also the LMIG stuff. And I also take out the fund balance to give us a true amount of revenue that we generate and we, we collect, which is a little over five, right at $5 million. So we're at a hundred and nine percent. Hundred and nine percent of collections, you know, you want to be at a hundred percent plus, right? That's where we're at. And then we go down to expenditures and I take out some of the things, the same things down at the bottom, so we can get a true idea where we are with expenditures. So from the general fund, just speaking only from the general fund, we're at ninety-three percent of our expenditures. So again, we came under what we, we projected in expenditures and we went a little bit over in what we, we did for, we projected for revenues and, and that's what you want. And the other areas, you know, we got T-Sploss and Hotel Motel Fund and, and your, your capital and such. And what we don't spend in capital, we reapply. We put back in the fund balance, we apply to capital for the coming year. So we've already started making some process, progress on capital purchases. We just purchased a vehicle for Public Works that was in the budget. We had to get it quick because it was going to go. Those vehicles not only went up for price, but they go quick. And we also have a bid going out here in the next week for the Public Works building that we've been talking about. So that bid is, that document is done. The ad is going to be running and it's got to be a thirty day ad, thirty day ad, anything over a hundred thousand dollars is going to go. So what we've been talking about with the Public Works building, that's another capital project. So we're, we're working toward the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Part of that also includes the audit, which my finance director over there is going to be working with. He's already been getting a lot of emails from auditors. He's going to come and do some field work ahead of time. So this is a fun time of year. We're wrapping up the budget. It's, it's not wrapped up yet, but for all intensive purposes it is. I wanted to touch on real quick on the, the ARPA funds because there's still some left. That's part of the grant. But it was, it was interesting because we budgeted bonuses, you remember, about a year and a half ago, we budgeted bonuses. We budgeted about three hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred, I think it was. And we actually spent three hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred. I mean, I was like, it just worked out and that was, that was good. We also, from, from a capital standpoint, Public Works, seventy-three thousand of the ARPA money has been used for Public Works. And forty-seven thousand has been used for public safety fire. So we're, we're using that ARPA money as it's supposed to be used. Now, there's a lot more in the financials, but I didn't want to, I wanted to do two things. I wanted to recognize the chief and also I, I know there's a lot on the agenda at night. And I've been happy to answer any questions you may have about the financials this month. Next month, it'll be a short report because there's not going to be much happening in, in July, as you know, not much spending, not much revenue coming in.
One of the benefits of our conservative budgeting paradigm is that we always have extra money at the end of the year, right? We always get in more revenue than we're budgeting and always spend a little less and more budgeting. And we've been saving that money up for a couple of years to be able to do a more efficient paving project. I'm not going to say anything to the city engineer because he's not here today. But thank goodness that finally next month, we will be able to finalize that project and get that paving going. Because once again, we've added a good, good money to the pot this year for that process. So appreciate you shepherding that.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you, guys.
Next up is a fire department report from Chief Brett.
Thank you, Mayor. And city council and citizens, the report I have for you, I think I've got copies over here on the table. I hope you'll get it. Remember that it's also available, citizens also available at our city website. The month of June, a little bit tough on us in terms of EMS calls and so forth. Some of the calls that we wind up on before or during or after police involvement have, have been demanding. I'll, I'll say it that way. Storms, you know, always require a lot of extra effort, a lot of chainsaw time, a lot of time out on a roadway. On into the dark hours, us working alongside Public Works. Handling things when we can to make it easier on them. For some of us in the department, we've had a little bit of a struggle with the death of two colleagues, not former employees or, or persons within our department, but people who are connected. I'll give you one example. Not so long ago, you met Christian Pace. Our rookie, who was a graduate of the Clayton County Fire Department Fire Academy. And we learned just the other day or that his, one of his classmates coming to work was killed in a head-on collision. And, you know, for some of us who've been doing this a bit, you'd never quite get get where you can entirely handle all that, but this young man's really struggling with that. So I'd ask you to think about Christian. Construction development is, just seems like it is on steroids right now. And so we are spending so much time in plan and review, so much time at sites, doing inspection and as-built inspection, sprinkler system inspection. So I think that's probably that thing that that a lot of folks don't realize is a heavy load is, is a lot of what we do in, in terms of fire and life safety code. In the report, I've given you a couple of, shown you a couple of photos here. I think that is a good cross-section of Chattahoochee Hills. And, and what is taking place in terms of our, our inspections, the EMS calls, the storms. The fun one there, the one that we don't ever get to talk about enough is when we have visitors at the station. And so the photo to the upper right there, you see is firefighter Tim West with some visitors. We've had a couple of birthday parties and a couple of little visitor groups during the summertime. And our plan is to close out the summertime before going back to school with a water wars opportunity for kids to come over and just have fun with the firefighters and their water pistol versus our water pistol. Yeah. Finally, just to let you know, obviously there is a great deal of interest in projects that are developing here, specifically Kane Studios. I want to emphasize that significant amount of research and strategic planning goes into things like that as it relates to what are their requirements, what do we need to serve their needs, doesn't, not just Kane Studios, anybody. But this is the point. I want to emphasize that we do so in as fair and transparent a way as possible according to Georgia law and always with the idea of what serves our citizens and our city the most. And so I think everyone has heard that, that if this could project continues forward, that all benefits that come to us or, or in terms of new apparatus or operations will be for the benefit of the whole city. No one, single entity exclusively. And I'm happy to stand stand on that line. Questions and answers. Maybe you got an answer for me.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Herb. Thank you.
No, Greg, what I was going to say, the, the Chat Hills alerts you have at the bottom. I just have a quick story because I think it's really important. Whoever's not signed up, sign up. I was at a friend's house locally. And there was the last big storm and you know, but you can't hear it from inside and suddenly, you know, I get your ding, my friend didn't. And I'm like, I swear the trees are bent over outside. Hide, you know, but you won't know. And I know a lot of folks that are not signed up, but just put in the, you actually. And I know a lot of folks that are not signed up, but just put in the, you actually, you just go online, grab it. Fill it out and send it in. But you will, you'll see it, it just dang, I'm like Greg's got a message.
Uh, next up is a report from our uh, police chief, Kevin DeGue. Who. I think was a little surprised at the work session when suddenly. Somebody was looking for input from him and Jim wasn't there and, and he stepped right up to the ball and, and took care of it for us. So appreciate you being here and, and. I'm not gonna single out your wife and say things to her about how pleased we are to have you here. Uh, or, or like draw attention or, or anything. But again, we're, we're glad, we're glad to have you. Thanks very much and, and thanks for your support, Ian.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, uh, citizens. Uh, first, I'd like to say thank you. Uh, thank you for trusting me in this position. Um, you know, Chattahoochee Hills reminds me of the town that I grew up in, very small town, very rural town. Uh, which is one of the reasons that I decided to come here. But so anyway, thank you. Um, and I look forward to serving as your police chief. Uh, you have the, this, the stats for the, the police department over the month of June. Um, just like we have been talking in, in the past. You know, everything is increasing, our, our dispatch calls are increasing, our citations, everything is, is, is increasing as we get busier. With, through traffic. Um, one of the things I wanted to talk about is typically during the summer months, we do what's called the Hundred Days of Summer Heat. Where we harp on uh, speeding, distracted driving and some of the speeds that we're seeing. Um, and it's all in a, in an effort to slow people down, to stop the wrecks. I know we had eight wrecks this, this month, but we were doing fine until the storm hit. Uh, we, I think we only had like two and then the storm, we had three during the storm and then for some reason. We had like three or four deer strikes, which is typically, again, here in Chattahoochee Hills, that's normal. Um, to an extent, but usually you see that in the fall, not in the middle of the summer. But anyway, uh, some of the speeds that, that my officers are getting, uh, we got one guy doing ninety-two on Cedar Grove. Um, seventy-five on Hutchinson Ferry, eighty-three on Hutchinson Ferry, eighty-five on, on the Parkway. So these are. Absolutely, these are, these, and this is the reason that we really participate in the Hundred Days of Summer Heat to slow these people down. And it, there's zero tolerance, so you get pulled over, you're getting a ticket. You know, especially for those speeds, that's just ridiculous. Um, one other thing I wanted to, to, to talk briefly about is it's not on here because it happened on July fourth. We had an incident and Greg kind of alluded to it after the, after the fire department got there, we had a person that was in crisis. And unfortunately, he committed a, a crime, so we had to take him in, but it got me thinking. So what I'm going to do in the next month or two is I'm gonna send one of my officers to what's called CIT training. It's crisis intervention training and it deals specifically with people having a mental crisis. And it's a forty-hour class, it will teach him the, the tools and the um. Things that he needs to deal with, to help him deal with someone who's having a crisis. Um, it will also. Um, give him the tools here in Fulton County of who to call when he gets out and he see, in the scenes and he de-escalates it. What resources Fulton County has and we'll put them directly. And I think, I think that will help. It's certainly something that, that I've noticed here that we need. Um, so. He'll be going to that training here in, in the next month or two. They only do it a few times a year. Um, and so he'll be going, I think it's in August. Yeah, August, so. Um, other than that, is there any questions?
All right, we're going easy on this month. Uh, next up is our public works director. Oh, good, Ruby's on Zoom, I'm full. Sorry, Ruby, you've probably been there for a while. Kevin, I'm sorry, uh, Daryl Onelet, Public Works Director.
Extraordinary.
Extraordinary.
Good evening, my favorite people.
So humble, that's the thing.
I like this style.
Well, it is what it is. All right, if you noticed, if, if any residents or anybody have visited Cochrane Mill Park lately, we've done a lot of, lot of work in there the last month. Uh, as Richie said, stated a few times about the stomps and the roots and the day use area. We've uh, brought in a bunch of gravel and built that area, fixed a swing. It's been reported to be messed up for so long. It's hard to get parts anywhere right now to make something old, new again. So anyway. We've spent a lot of time over there, pretty much the whole month. We've been working on the, the new parking lot. Uh, uh, me and Robbie has been discussing, trying to find out if it's finished. We, we don't know, but I know. Couple of weeks ago, there was some crews in there with larger trucks. Uh, thank goodness, we didn't fix the parking lot to a final because it was destroyed, even Chimp didn't send me, he keeps me updated with the park on the weekends. Which is good and I appreciate it. It's ruts really deep, so. But like I said, we've done a lot of work over there, just waiting on here, that, going to add some gates. Hopefully, uh, we've done the right away work preparing for the summer. Now hopefully we're on next few weeks, we're transitioning back over to doing the scrapings. Uh, on the gravel roads, starting all the way, beginning all the way through to the city, that's the plan. Before it gets winter time and all the foliage hits the ground, that's the thing or that we, that we are focusing on and within the next month. Getting, getting ahead of fall. Um, all right, you know, the sidearm that we bought, it's been in the shop for a little while. Uh, of course, good thing it's on, under warranty, but we're waiting on that to get back. So when, soon as the fall comes, we'll start right away. Cutting back on the sidearm. You know, there's, if you notice when you ride the city, it's a little bit more than what I allow. I don't like it, but when that gets back, we'll, we'll definitely get on, on that. Um, I want to finish out by saying a few things about the staff that I've been working with, a few things that we've been doing. As Greg stated earlier about the storms. Uh, I, y'all hear us, me and Greg say this a lot about the way we work well together. Uh, he calls me, I call him. When storms are hitting, we're just making sure we're communicating, what do you need, what is, so. I come in at eight o'clock on Sunday and I didn't leave till after four o'clock on Monday. But Greg here the whole time, Greg going and getting me jackets or going and getting food and went to uh, swimming. He brought back food and of course they didn't give all the food. So he's trying to give me money because they didn't give me the food that we ordered, but anyway. But thank goodness for the relationship, the relationship I have with Greg, because I mean, he's right there with a chainsaw. He's got his lights going on, he directs traffic. And y'all know with a small staff, that's a lot of work with these trees, especially at your house, uh. Troy, there was a monster tree, one about a over a hundred-year-old tree that completely closed the road off. It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
For my staff, but my staff don't complain. They come in, we work. We do what we do, so we get paid to do and we're grateful and thankful to do it. And I just wanted to take a moment to, to say I appreciate the fire department. Because they worked so good with Public Works, it's a great relationship and, and I'm grateful for that. I look forward to, to working with the PD with, with the new chief. Building a better relationship and, and, and see, just going further and making the city better. And I really look forward to the new uh. New chief, really do. Um, also, if you notice when you ride through the city, Graystone's cutting right aways, I get a lot of call, phone calls. Your guys are doing this and your guys are not doing this and not signs, uh. That's not my guys, thank goodness. So when I get these calls, I do go out and check my guys. They're putting their signs out and doing what they should, but Graystone, we've, we've uh, implemented a few things. About when they come in our city to make sure if they're going to be blocking a road. They fill out a form, don't, just let us know that way the. Police Department and the Fire Department knows. When they go get a call on that road, there's gonna be one lane of traffic that day. We try to do that to keep, Serenby's been doing it for a while. If they have a crane or something comes in, blocks the road, they let us know. And it just helps better for the PD and the Fire Department to respond uh, to, to incidents that they need to respond to. Um, also the sewer system that's going through. Uh, they're, they're still working and they're not as far along as we want them to, but. Uh, they've done a, a pretty good job. If you ride around, look at their finished product. They're doing a really good job, they're fixing a lot of stuff that we needed fixed and on the right ways, which has been a benefit for us. Uh, they're over there on Lanin Inn around, of course, uh, Mr. Alton Powell calls and informs him what's going on. I went to meet him, he don't have a phone right now, so I went to meet him. He wasn't there, so I left him a nice letter on, on the door that we're. Uh, communicate, went about, put some additional crossings and stuff like that, so. Also, uh, as DeGue was talking, uh, Chief DeGue was talking about the speed in our city. You know, tell, if you're not talking to friends and talking to other residents, let them know if they see a men working sign. My rule is, at the end of the day, my guys pull their signs down. Because if you leave a sign up through the night when people travel, they don't see anybody there, you're sending false hope because they come back the next day. Well, the sign was there yesterday, but there's nobody working, so there's nobody there. So if you see these signs, please slow down because you think my guys are on the right away with weed eaters and stuff. And people are doing eighty mile an hour and they come around them. I've saved one of my guys because he was on edge of road and just happened to be in front of a truck and snatched him out of the way. It just happens. Yeah, just be aware, a sign is just very important that we don't need incidents like that in our city. And, and, and uh, of course, PD being out there. Being, their presence is huge for us, that's what we need for our safety. That's, that's pretty much all what I have. Busy, busy month, this time of the year is really busy for us, a lot of grass to be cut, a lot of things to be done, projects to be done. Questions? I see you eager, I'll like it.
Um. So Daryl, do you have any idea, um, has, has Graystone told you from the time their crew. Cuts the right away to the time the next crew comes and cleans up all the stuff they left on the ground?
Yep, they, they won't let. If you remember a few years ago, we had a big, big problem.
Yeah.
With PLC and the quality of work that we demand in our city. Uh, we've had a meeting with the Graystone and I sat down with PLC and we told them the standards that we expect. And even Clay Carter, which is our representative for Graystone right away. He told him that no matter what, they will come back until we are satisfied. And if they're not satisfied, they will be off the circuit. They'll have a new company come in, but it'll, sometimes if you notice when you ride through, you'll see limbs left. And they'll be, and you won't see them for a few days. That's because, you know, you think, you got some crews that are cutting. And then you got one crew coming up and cleaning up and this is a big city, we all know. So they'll make their path through. I don't know, they don't give you a timeline because it does rain, the weather, it all, it depends on weather. But once they're done, I'll know they're done and then I'll ride around with uh, the representative from Graystone. And we'll make sure everything is done, what need to be done, if not, they'll send it back to, we're satisfied. Is that a good answer?
Daryl, I need to speak to you about that later on.
Yes, sir. All right, no worries. I'm sure, eh, all right.
Yeah, like in my own yard, I've had it there for a month.
Yeah, I noticed I rode a couple of rows today, going doing some inspections, seeing a bunch of stuff still laying in corners. And I was like, kind of.
I spoke to both myself about it.
Yeah.
Over the next time I speak to somebody, it's gonna be for Graystone forward.
Right, yeah, well, definitely Clay Carter will, yeah, let me know where the areas and I'll get Clay on.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Want to reiterate and, and would like you to make sure to pass along to your crew, man, I'm an email, text them sometimes with you and Greg. As you're out there. Darko thirty working on stuff, so you guys hear it coming, but make sure to pass along to the team, right? Thanks from everybody, because I know it's tough work at night. Uh, out there and it's, it's not a particularly safe environment to be in. And the other thing too is just to underscore your point, we all know that we had somebody from the Public Works team a couple of years ago get hit. By somebody that was speeding around the barricades and, and nearly killed, uh, like. Incredible, like she didn't get killed, so that's, that's a serious request.
Yes, sir.
We've had our own experience with that. Thanks, Gerald.
Thank you so much.
Is a community development report from Director Morton.
Mayor and Council, you again have the numbers in front of you for um, uh, building permitting activity. I think I had predicted a month ago that we would see a bump and uh, some higher numbers. That didn't materialize this month. I'm still expecting it. I expect you'll see it probably next month. Um, because we have a couple of new developments or phases um, that have come online and uh, just so permits just hadn't been issued yet. So um, this month we had uh, in June fifteen permits versus twenty-two a year ago. Um, half as many houses as a year ago, two versus four, so not large numbers uh, uh, in general. And then um, uh, again inspections also down, just reflecting the lower overall uh, level of activity recently. Um, I do have uh, quite a few um, applications in and inspected, um, things that are significant for the city. Um, I've received an application for a five-hundred-and-twenty-six acre village at the corner of South Fulton Parkway and Cochran Mill Road. Um, that project is just entering the DRI process or will be entering within a week or two, um, the DRI process. So something that we'll um, see on the calendar for hearings in, in a few months, probably late fall. Um, September, October, November, somewhere in that range, probably depending on how the DRI process goes. I also have another application for a residential hamlet. Um, um, on the El Baroso property, they recently received um, special use permits for an event center and um. Uh, Country Inn, um, he's now back. I was not expecting this probably for a few years, but it's something that he had always been thinking for the property. The ability to um, put some uh, uh, single-family residences in there, um, so I now have an application from them. Um, it's a hundred acres, the residential hamlet requires uh, eighty percent preserve, preservation. So it's a pretty small development footprint in there, but uh, you'll be seeing that, I think, first read probably. Next, on next month's, uh, next month's agenda. Um, I'm also expecting an application in, um, within the next week for a mixed-use hamlet up toward the north end of the city. Um, something I think that uh, uh, some of you may have uh, uh, heard about. Um, little over two hundred acres, I think it's around two-hundred-and-thirty, two-hundred-and-thirty-ish or maybe more acres. Um, I don't have that application in, but um, I know that they've been getting in contact also with uh, uh, ARC about getting into the DRI process. So that will also be going through the DRI process and again, probably coming before you all on that September, October, November sort of timeframe. Um, again, assuming the DRI process all goes uh, as we, as we expect. Um, so those are all um, pretty big things uh, coming up. Um, and then uh, the only thing, other thing I wanted to mention, we have planning commission meeting coming up a week from Thursday, nine days from today on the twentieth. Six thirty PM, um, the only thing right now that I have on that agenda is, or for that agenda is um, public hearings, first hearings for the five special use permits. That we have on, uh, first reads for on this evening's agenda. So that'll be coming up again a week from Thursday. Questions?
If you have any questions for Mike, might as well say. Well, actually, no, go sit in the meantime. It, it'll be just a second. Uh, first up, we have a, a public hearing item, public hearing in action on ordinance to amend zoning map. To rezone twenty-three point thirty-four acres, although it's actually, I think, a bit less than that, right? And. Rick, do you have public comment cards?
I, I do.
All right, so Mike, why don't you describe the project to us, in particular, the one change to. Uh, what is going on here and then, Rick, you can read the rules for us in the public hearing.
Okay, so this is an application to rezone, um, uh, the application is to rezone twenty-three point three-four acres from RL World to HMMU. Mixed-use hamlet to expand the Serenby uh, mixed-use hamlet. Uh, it's the first, uh, on the left over there is the um, uh, the map of the property. Um, three lots were included in the application, um, one of them a twenty-one point two-one acre, uh, single-family parcel. Um, and then there's another nearby, just another roughly one acre parcel, just to note that both of those are on Watkins Road. Uh, the proposal by the applicant is um, for no new development on either of those parcels, the small parcel would just become an open space and buffer. For the hamlet, the larger parcel, um, they would define a two-acre parcel around the existing home. Um, and then not uh, the current plan, plan we have in hand is, is not to do anything else with that property. Um, it does involve a concept plan change for those F lot formats just to the north to add two more lots on that property. Um, and they would cluster them together, meeting the city's clustering requirement. So those would be one acre lots, um, just to the north. So that would be a, a modification of that uh, concept plan on those, those F formats. The third lot is um, off of Atlanta Inn Road, just beyond the end of uh, Rock Hill Drive. Um, upon uh, further study, uh, we realized that that lot actually was rezoned to Hamlet, mixed-use Hamlet in twenty-eighteen. Um, and so um, it doesn't need to be uh, rezoned in this action. Um, there are a, a couple of uh, things to be done to, to remove that. Um, the legal description of that parcel, it's tract three in the um, legal descriptions in exhibit A on the ordinance. So we could remove tract three um, from the legal description. And then there are a couple of uh. Uh, a, a couple of conditions related specifically to that um, parcel number seven and eight in the, in the um, proposed conditions. Number seven, any improvement of Rock Hill Drive must remain within the right of way. Staff has no objection to that condition, it's just not really related. Um, and then the last sentence of condition eight, no change to the November twenty-twenty-two Art Farm Concept Plan is approved by this action. That statement remains true whether it's in there or not, um, but again, it's, it's no longer relevant, um, if that parcel is renewed.
Great, thanks, Mike. All right, uh, Rick, you want to read the uh, oh, here, roll some, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the mayor will allow each side equal opportunity to the floor and establish time limits for this public hearing. If you desire to speak in support of or in opposition to the item, you must fill out a public comment card and turn it in to me, the city attorney. Those called to speak will be taken in the order, the speaker ca, cards were received by the city attorney. All speakers should identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. In this case, each side will have ten minutes to present their case. The applicant and all those speaking in support of the application will speak first. The applicant may choose to save some of the allotted time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Those opposing the issue shall speak next. If any time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut the final remarks made by the applicant. Those opposing the issue shall speak next. If any time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut the final remarks made by the applicant. Following the presentations by the applicant, those speaking in support of and those opposing the application, the city staff shall present their position. The city clerk will keep track of time, will inform you when your allotted time has expired. During the public hearing, members of the city council shall listen to the presentation made by all those who speak. No action on their part is in order until the mayor declares the public hearing complete. In addition, the applicant shall not submit new material to the city council during the meeting unless requested to do so by a council member. All material which the applicant wishes to be considered shall be submitted to the city planner prior to the meeting so that the material may be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. Finally, in a rezoning matter, the applicant and any person who desires to speak during the public hearing who has contributed campaign contributions totaling two hundred and fifty dollars or more to any member of the mayor and council shall disclose such contributions prior to speaking during the public hearing. Failure to disclose such campaign contributions constitutes a misdemeanor. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. All right. Um, do we want to hear from the applicant?
Are we gonna limit the individual?
I'm happy to hold my comments.
Sorry, we're having a sidebar here.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Sorry, go ahead, Karen. So you're gonna hold your comments? Okay.
All right. So now we're going to those who oppose, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I was talking to the city clerk. All right, first is uh Donnie Hyder.
Now, to be clear, just, I mean, Mr. Hyder, I know you may have heard this, but the parcel on Atlanta Noonan has been removed from this conversation today. Again, happy to hear your comments.
Just want to clarify one. I had, before we get started, I had asked about the time, you know, the procedure, I want to be in line as far as the procedures concerned. There was some difference about whether you get three minutes versus ten. Um, Dana said it was three, but he just read ten.
It's ten for the total group. So it's ten for the applicant and those who are uh um in support of and ten minutes for those who oppose. So if you were to take all ten minutes, nobody else could speak. But we're not limiting any individual to three tonight.
Okay, so I was told before that, and I was limited in the planning commission meeting to the three minutes. I was asking for the team. And Dana.
But again, that would have been, because I looked at the minutes of the planning commission meeting, you would have taken everybody else's time. And I guess it's just a way of trying to allow multiple people to speak. So but tonight, I've not put into the um to the rules that anybody's gonna be limited to three minutes, but please, Mr. Hyder, if you take all ten, nobody else, and I've got like, I think, four of the cards of people who want to speak will have an opportunity. So just keep that in mind, and I know you're a neighbor, but just keep that in mind.
Okay, but clarity on that, I had asked for the balance of the time and was denied the balance of the time.
In the planning commission meeting?
Is that correct, Dana? You said you couldn't do that. You said you couldn't do a bow. I I said I wanted to take Selma's.
Do we want to this, you, um, what you had asked me, what I understood you asking me is you were taking someone else's time that the, and we were not allowing that. The the planning commission chair limited the individual comments for each person to three minutes. So.
And I'm not talking, right, this isn't the law, just saying that each side has whatever the rules are, the rules. And we're setting ten minutes tonight for the planning commission could could divvy it up if it wanted, if the chairman wanted to do that, as long as both sides were treated equally. But I can't go back to what happened in the planning commission. I can only handle what's happening tonight, Mr. Hyder. Tonight, you have ten minutes on the side, but again, please understand, there's uh three or four more people who want to speak behind you.
Right, I just want to clarify, the other three people are Travis Kenobi, Selma, Hyder, and um um Cleve Johnson.
That's correct.
Do you have a, okay, they've deferred all, well.
Oh, that's fine. You can take all your time.
Um, and Selma has deferred their time to me, and Mr. Kenobi is gonna take the balance that I don't.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And we'll go ahead and start the clock now.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, first of all, I oppose the application, um, I believe I oppose the application for the rezoning. Um, I understand that you all have taken one parcel out of that proposal. Um, but it's not in the packet. Um, so it seems like you all just sort of said is taken out, but it's not a part of the packet. So we didn't have an opportunity to review that alteration. Is, would that be correct?
No, we discussed that alteration in our work session. Everybody up here is clear that the parcel on Atlanta Noonan, the one acre parcel on Atlanta Noonan was already rezoned in twenty eighteen. It was an accidental request from the planning department to the applicant to put that in there to clean that up. It's not necessary because it was already done. And so we're not, we're not acting on that because it's already happened five years ago.
But but as far as the public is concerned, all we have is the packet that includes that one acre parcel. So we're not on notice that anything has changed with that.
Okay, again, there's no action on the part of council, Mr. The mayor, we we stopped the your time so that you weren't having that eaten up while he was talking. But this is your opportunity to present your side to the mayor and council.
Okay, so so my my whole issue here is process and procedure. Um, Dana made a comment that you all could change it sort of as you go, depends on the the council or the planning commission or whatever. I I can tell you that's incorrect. There are there are ordinances. There are laws that cities are governed by. And you can't just, a a council or a planning commission can't change the UDC rules that were adopted by the city as you please. And I I told Dana that they allowed it the other time, and she said, well, we we're um tightening those up. And so I'm like, well, well, which is it? And she said it's three minutes. She checked with um um Rick and she's, and he, I have an email where they said it's three minutes. Um, she said it's three. He said now it's ten. Um, they say you can change it. It depends on the council, it depends on the planning commission. I can tell you, I'm not a lawyer, I'm a business person, but I can tell you that that's not the case. You can't do that. There are UDC, there are laws, there are constitutional laws, there are state laws, there are city laws uh for equal treatment and fairness across the board, and they can't be just changed even by a body as this. They can't be changed by the city attorney, can't be changed by the director, and cannot with all due respect be changed by the mayor. That's just a fact of 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 just law. I I don't need to check anything on that. But but here's the thing, a lot of moving parts, um you you put into the the zoning in and then you're taking it out, the the la- this this particular one acre parcel was tied to a variance that I opposed and the other residents opposed um with a variant, but you all did it anyway. Um, that approval of the variance, which um basically depreciated my buffer from one hundred fifty feet as the law required, as the ordinance required, as the uh rule, um um, you know, rule to hamlet required, and you reduce them. It it said you had, you know, a criteria, you had to meet all criteria um before you could do that. And you you did it anyway, you didn't have the criteria. They said they had a hardship because you couldn't build on it, but Mike said they could build upon it. You could build a amphitheater. You just couldn't have all the other different things that you wanted, but you could build an amphitheater. So the statement of a hardship that is unbuildable is on its face false. And Mike, you know, he confirmed that you could build the amphitheater. Maybe you couldn't build all the other things that you wanted to do. So we're just talking about fundamental fairness with that. I reached out to the city attorney, Rick, and I I told him this is not according to ordinance. Could you review it as a city attorney? His response to me was, pretty much, the council has made their decision. He didn't say, well, you're you're wrong. He didn't say that we abide it by the ordinance. He's just said that we made our decision, which is very similar to what they're saying here is depending on the meeting, depending on what's going on, we can kind of change it as we wish. I can tell you that that's not the case. Um, uh, as far as this zoning, um, they said the zoning was 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 missing as far as that's concerned. I'm sorry, I got a timer for myself. Um, and um, I asked him to get a legal opinion from Rick. Rick said whether needed or not, he put it in writing, whether needed or not needed is good. I'm like, well, wait a minute, that's not how this works. He said, well, whether, well, i- if you're applying for variance, you're you're applying to vary from the law. But he said whether needed or not needed, that's the whole purpose of a variance, because there are rules with rural, rules with hamlet that are governed, and the other city council, I believe it was Ruby the other time, said, well, they're gonna do it anyway, whether it's rural or hamlet. I'm like, well, wait a minute, I'm trying to hit a moving target here. Which one? You you're changing the the the, you're moving the goalposts, but basically what he's saying is whether needed or not needed, we're gonna do what we want to do anyway. And if we want to give you three minutes to this time or ten minutes the other time, the UDC says you have ten minutes. You have ten minutes with planning, you have ten minutes with um the others as well. And I asked um Dana to send that over, and it clearly says you have ten minutes. She said you couldn't use the balance of anybody's time. She told me that and denied me that during the planning, but he just read it and it's right here for planning and zoning that you have ten minutes. The opposition just have ten minutes. I was only afforded three. So I was denied my rights to seven minutes with the planning concerning this. And I, you know, I oppose, I think, um, you can't just take out the one thing. And um I have my attorney here, and I'm gonna allow him to move forward. Can you give us the time on the book?
We have um three minutes and forty-nine seconds.
Uh, Council, Mr. Mayor, my name is Travis Kenobi. Uh, I'm an attorney in the city of Atlanta. The removal of one tract did shorten my comments some, but it also raised some questions for me because um when I heard that that was gonna be removed today, um, I understand from your comments that that was removed in a public, in a in a work session. There was no amended notice given regarding this application. What the city council has in front of it is an application regarding three parcels. Uh, there is nothing that I have found in the UDC that would allow um the city council to consider a portion of the application and not the remainder. Um, and if there is such provision, I would ask that that provision be cited in the ordinance that is adopted, should the city council agree or wish to um wish to approve the subdivision request. The problem, really, as my client stated, is that a city council can only act as constitutionally permitted, as permitted by the legislature that creates the city and created by the UDC that governs not just the city council, but the property rights of every single citizen of this city. And that UDC cannot be deviated from. If the UDC is deviated from in a manner that's not permissible by the procedures and policies in the UDC itself, there have been numerous Georgia cases from jurisdictions very close to here and very recent that have indicated that deviation from these ordinances amounts to a unconstitutional taking of property rights of owners that are affected. And uh, this is in Fulton County, there was one in Gwinnett County, and there was one in DeKalb County that held that that very thing. So but still, even with the removal of the one point one acre parcel, I I'm I'm still confused as to how this city council decided after November two thousand twenty-two's ordinance that, wait, one of these parcels was not zoned, hamlet, but was zoned rural. Uh, so maybe we didn't need to do anything. And then there was a legal opinion issued about it and whether the ordinance could include language correcting that issue. And then all of a sudden, it's the day before, and for the first time, my client hears who you knew was gonna oppose this, my client hears, oh, wait, it was actually zoned hamlet the whole time. If city council and the planning committee can't even figure out whether something is zoned rural or hamlet, how is the general public of this city to whom you owe legal and constitutional obligations supposed to know that? But now that you've pointed out and that your counsel has pointed out the two thousand and eighteen application, I decided to take a look at it. And frankly, that application raises some serious questions about the factual findings that you would have had to
Thirty seconds.
For the November twenty-two.
Gonna be awesome. Where's it gonna be hanging out, do you think?
And this will, this will be my last comment, is here's why that two thousand and eighteen application matters. Because in that two thousand and eighteen application, which was for a subdivision change or the the for change in the zoning of that part of those parcels, the applicant was required to show at that time that there was.
Finish your thought.
Okay.
Because I'm allowed to make, give you the time to do that.
Okay.
I'm I'm just saying, finish your thought, please, because I'm allowed to give you the time to do that.
I'm I'm doing so. I I appreciate you're doing so. Um, but in that application, they were required to show, among other things, to get approval for the change in zoning, that the um that that you had to consider the impact on surrounding parcels and the zoning of surrounding parcels. That's what the UDC requires. In that, to address that concern, they said, the buffer zones will protect surrounding properties. And then in two thousand and twenty-two, they come and they say, well, we don't need those buffer zones anymore. So um, the the two thousand and eighteen application renders some of the findings a fact that would have had to have been made for the two thousand and twenty-two ordinance invalid.
Thank you. So are there any others or?
And there are no more, and that's the end of the allotted time for the opposition, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Now, the applicant had reserved um all ten minutes of the applicant's time for rebuttal.
I don't have rebuttal, but I'm happy to answer any questions you all have about the two parcels, the twenty-one acres and the one acre.
Um, during during this time, um, it's not for the mayor and council to act. If you have something to say, Garni, you're free to do, okay.
All right. So to be clear, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And to be clear, what we talked about in the city council work session is exactly what we're gonna do next, which would be to offer an amendment to the item that's on the docket in front of us, as we often do, based on conversations that we have in the meetings, because that is our normal process, to remove the item that we have in the process of going through this. Uh, the staff has realized that they have erroneously asked for a rezoning on because it had already been rezoned. And that is one of those humans sometimes pull the wrong thing off of the shelf, uh, errors that we're correcting before we take action. So what I'd like to do is uh two things. We're gonna amend to remove the tract three from the legal description, because that is the piece that's in question that was already rezoned five years ago. And also the associated conditions that relate to that parcel, because while they are in fact the fact, they're not relevant to this reason. And with that in mind, I'd like to ask for a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh two oh uh as amended with those two changes.
I make a motion, we adopt twenty-three dash oh two oh with those amended changes. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor adopting twenty-three dash oh two oh, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up uh is the one that we're deferring, the T-Slosh thing. Again, we're deferring that uh because uh it is not ready, and we don't have the information to actually act on to award the bid. So could I get a motion in a second, please, to defer twenty-three dash oh two two? Because, okay, sorry. Oh, with the agenda change, never mind, sorry. I'm feeling it need to be very proper. We want to take these next ones together or you want to do them separately? It's a first read, so it's it's really up to you. You're gonna be talking a lot. We're not active in anything.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, they are all different, even though they are related. So um, I would, I would recommend we take those separately.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, Mike, if you would, twenty-three dash oh two three, which is the special use permit for the hotel. And again, no action here tonight. Mike's just going to let us know what's going on.
First read, first read only. This is one of five special use permits applications. Also to be clear, as I mentioned in the, in the work session, that the notice that went out, one notice went to a group of people that mentioned four of them. A note of the notice went to a different group of people that mentioned one of them to geographically separate areas based on our notification range. I just wanted to be clear about that. This first one is for a proposed hotel on, at the corner of Selvern Lane and Selvern Way across from the across from the Hill Restaurant in the, in the general location or on the same lot as where the farmer's market is in Saranby. The lot is 10.15 acres. Proposal is for a hotel, a 109 key hotel, including a 400 seat ballroom, conference rooms, and 150 seat restaurant. The overall development on that parcel would also include some office and retail and a couple, couple more restaurants. And yeah, this is just first read. We'll have public hearings, planning commission in nine days and then next month in city council.
Can I ask a question? So what's the difference between referring to a hotel with a number of keys, 109 keys versus 100 rooms? What's the difference between keys and rooms?
It's the same, same thing.
It's just hotel terminology.
And, and I think I'm asking that because if, maybe it was the other one that actually has rooms and then villas and those are coming together. So I'm a little more confused. Maybe that's the second application I'll witness for that one.
We have the application, applicants here who may be able to shed some light on specifically.
Let me wait till you address this in the
For the next one, okay.
One, one general comment on all these two, as we always do with these kind of rezonations, there's a list of conditions, right? The, kind of our general normal list and then also specific conditions to each of these. Those will be ready in time for the first public hearing in the planning commission will be received around the same time for our review. So those are not a part of this yet. Mike, if you would, go ahead then with twenty-three dash oh two four.
Okay. So twenty-three dash oh two four is a hotel down in the, just south of the motto neighborhood in Saranby. So it's on Saranby Lane. Just north of the Coeida County line. It is on a parcel along with the other three proposals that Katie will, will talk about in a minute. A big kind of leftover parcel that a lot of other lots have been carved out of in a very different place, though, from the wellness center. But it's on a, a large, actually two large 44 acre and 45 acre parcels. The site itself is just a little over eight acres, though. So the hotel site is just a small, a small piece of that very large remainder parcel. It's described as 100 room hotel. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the plans here may be just a little less mature and 100 acre, 100 rooms might be just a a general ballpark figure rather than an exact number. But a hundred room hotel, which would include a restaurant and spa. And that would be the hotel itself on the east side of the, of Selvern Lane. So the left, as you're heading down toward the Coeida County line. Parking lot would be on the other side, the right side. This property falls off pretty precipitously from, from the road. And I think the, the plan is to take advantage of that fall. So the hotel would have a, a a very low height along the road, but, but on the other side, a lot of, a lot of frontage looking over that sort of valley.
And in this context, again, just to answer that keys question, if you had villas and rooms inside the hotel, the number of keys would be the total of those, correct? It's the rental rooms, basically.
So yeah, I want to think of a villa, I think of a standalone thing, not a part of the hotel, but I'm not familiar with all the terms. So in, in this site in motto, that will be like a destination spot. Some similar projects in other parts of the country and world, you'll have some freestanding cottages, if you will. So a villa is like, if you're checking into a hotel and there's a separate cottage that is outside of like a main property. So villa is another term for like a two or three bedroom cottage.
Still connected.
On this eight acres. Yeah, exactly. So it doesn't, it doesn't bleed into the Hamlet. It's part of like the, the total eight acre project.
And then will this particular project also have meeting space too or?
A little bit, like so some, but substantially less than the Selvern Hotel projects.
Thanks, Karen. Next up is twenty-three dash oh two five, which is the, I'll let you describe it.
The applicant has applied for three special use permits for 7.16 acres at the rear of 10950 Hudson Berry Road. Specifically, it's the northwest corner of Promfield Road and Saranby Lane. The applicant's original proposals were to allow a medical laboratory, rooming house, and a rehabilitation center in the mixed use hamlet district. The applicant has requested withdrawal the application for the rehabilitation center because the UDC's definition of rehabilitation center does not match the intended use. The UDC's definition refers to a drug or alcohol rehabilitation center, non-occupational or physical therapy rehabilitation center. However, the applicant wishes to continue on with the other two applications for medical laboratory and rooming house. This is part of what is called the Wellness Hub. It will be located in the motto neighborhood at the corner of Promfield Road and Saranby Lane. Currently where the mail kiosk is located along Promfield Road and across the street from Saranby Pool and Acton Academy. It's part of a larger 44 acre parcel. In addition to the medical laboratory, rooming house, Wellness Hub will include medical offices, treatment centers, residences, retail, and a restaurant. The latter uses did not require special use permit. The applicant's plan includes a five to 10,000 square foot medical facility, which would house the medical laboratory and other medical offices. The proposed rooming house be an 18 unit complex divided into three attached clusters of six rooms. And that's just about it.
So I know it's hard to translate sometimes what something's going to be into the language of the zoning. Is there a better, like, here's, here's what this is going to be during?
If you look at the last map, like on the right, and I would walk over there, but then I don't have a microphone. So effectively, this is our aging in place campus, right? So will be what you may think of as independent and assisted living, but won't have age restriction, but will have the medical components. It's okay, I, I can if that's helpful, but have the health and wellness components, medical components to meet those needs. The, the concept behind the boarding houses is we have a progressive, what we think is progressive. And if you look to Europe of some ways to handle aging and a more social environment, right? As if you have six individual bedrooms. And then instead of in that room, having your own kitchen, living room, dining room, those components happen in a central space under the city zoning that is a boarding house. And so we have to apply for a boarding house for that use. So if you can imagine six, like really large bedrooms that have centralized kitchen, living, dining, so that people who are like living independently, but want community, want people to live with if they feel alone, it allows for that overall environment.
It's like a modern college dorm that has the central.
Exactly, exactly. And so under the city zoning, that is a boarding house.
That's the point I wanted to make. Our, our language sometimes doesn't fully.
Yeah, we've had to really explain, we have, we have lots of lovely signs all over Saranby right now for, for all of these and explaining that like medical laboratory and boarding house are the city's terms, not our terms, right? Not Saranby's terms for the project, but where the, where the project fits the needs.
So about the medical laboratory, talk about that a little bit. We've already had some residents ask this, really a medical laboratory, what's that about? Sounds a good idea.
Yeah. So the, the partners that we're in conversation with, people who will provide the overall services, want the ability to draw blood, provide labs, right? Provide all components and things that isn't just like a traditional doctor's office. And provide to the extent that you can under overall medical components. So part of this is we don't today, as this will open somewhere between two and three years from now, know exactly everything that it will fall under, but we want to be able to provide anything and everything with the partners that we have on the campus as we see intended to what, what we will serve. Like the boarding house, for instance, may not come in play until like eight years from now. But we want to be able to have that as part of the zoning, otherwise we can't move forward with financing and finding partners if we don't have the zoning in place.
So what did you mean by rehab center? Cause our zoning described it in a
More of a like PT. So like if somebody is like recovering from surgery and needs somewhere to go for a one, two, three, or four week time period and need all of the, and not necessarily live there long-term, right?
Nursing and rehab, not.
Without being age restricted. Yeah, exactly. And that's, that's the one that doesn't require special use permit, right? Correct. That piece. Right. Okay. So rehab, rehab, rehab as it fits, the, the city is drug, alcohol, mental, which we are not doing on this aging in place campus. Those things are all needed and positive for society, but we're not doing them on this, this specific parcel.
Thanks, Karen. No, that's it. I'm sorry. Again, those were first reads. We'll be getting more details of those between then and the next meeting. And they'll be talking about them in the planning commission as well. The next one was the development agreement, which we deferred. And then the, the last thing is a item twenty-three dash oh two seven, which is a resolution accepting a donation in two installments of $5,000 from Community Brickworks to be used for community outreach activities. And the reason that's on the agenda is that we're not allowed to accept donations without publicly accepting donations. The, the nice thing about it is it gives us the opportunity publicly thank the people that have made the donations for the generous donations that they give. And so there's being here from Brickworks. We, we talked to them a little bit at the work session as well. Very much appreciated. We appreciate the partnership with them. If I could get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-three dash oh two seven. Make the motion to adopt twenty-three dash oh two seven. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion about this? If not, all those in favor of adopting twenty-two dash oh two seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That passes and is accepted with great thanks from Chadu Chi Hills. Next up are mayor and council comments, and I will start on the right today. Actually, Ruby? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. I just want to say thanks to Community Brickworks and also thanks to the staff and everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruby. Richie?
Yeah. Appreciate you being here, Kevin. Congratulations. I appreciate you a long time. Do a good job. Either way, Daryl too, I appreciate you fixing up playground. People bugged me about that. That was long overdue. But yeah, I know, I know you work hard. Everything's the end. I get it. I appreciate it. Two, I, I'll just say this. This, this thing with Mr. Richard, well, I guess I'll ask you, Rick, I got a guy sitting here reading the law. I'm just, as a council person who can be called at any point, all this other stuff. I'm assuming however this is being handled, handled by well, I don't get involved however it ends. Or do we need to, if I listen to what that man says, he says this has to be done in a public setting. I just want to make sure it's crap. It's fan. It's my fault.
It did not have to be done in a public setting because we did, the council did not accept evidence or argument, which is what is required. If that had happened, like a mini trial, which is what it looks like, and I've been involved in it before, that has to be conducted in public. Had there been a vote about the personnel issue that night, that would have had to been done in public. There was no vote. There was no motion. There was no action taken. There were statements written that I asked all of the witnesses who were either in the meeting or within earshot of, or possibly earshot of, of what was being said in there to fill those out so that, and I made a package of each one for each of the council members. So everybody could read them. And then there was some discussion. There was no action taken. So we complied fully with the law. Council had the right to make a motion and whatever, we could have come out here and voted, but that did not happen.
Thanks, Rick. I'm, I'm rather concerned. Can I speak? Is that okay?
Well, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna go around you.
I, I'm rather concerned that we were not made aware in that meeting that we could bring it to a vote. I was not made aware, sitting up there. But we can talk about this later.
Okay.
Well, I was not made aware of the parameters of what we were doing. We were just taking statements, but I did not realize that that had legal implications beyond it. So I feel kind of misled in this at this. I'll just make that statement. Anything else? And yeah, just the only other thing too, you know, I, I know the 28 minimum thing got brought up and I guess I am happy to discuss that. I'd be glad to, you know, what I wanted to do, I guess, two and a half years ago was institute a tier system or at least had that talked about. As far as getting landowners back their rights and students have selling them. So I do look forward to that. No doubt.
Um, yeah, so appreciate people doing public comment. But the good part of that is, you know, we get to hear input and what's on your mind. The bad part is it's not an opportunity for dialogue. So we can't address anything that's heard in public comment. We can just stand up here and listen. But in my comment section, I can address Ms. Linda's comment that perhaps I'm bringing up impact fees and 20 acres as part of a campaign strategy. Ms. Linda, you're new to my district. And just to let you know that this is my fourth year as District Three Representative. And if I've done nothing, I've brought up issues that residents have asked me to do from one resident family that didn't like the millings on the road. I mean, just bring it up. And as far as the 20 acre issue, I've been studying on that for several months now since my last vacation. And Richie's brought that up several times too. Troy has too. And I just actually asked, let's, can we get this in some kind of discussion? So that's what that was about at our work session. Getting that into a discussion that's happening as part of our comp plan, education and implementation process. As far as the impact fees, another resident who I hear from often has talked to me about that on, ongoing and outgoing. We've addressed that at a planning retreat a year or so ago. And talked about the process that would be. So that's been an ongoing process. And there is an election coming up, qualifying is in August, the elections in November. Whether I qualify or not, whether I run or not, whether I win or not. What you can know is I'm going to sprint to the end. So up until my last day in office, if a resident comes to me and says, I've got an issue I want you to address to the council. I'm going to address it, whether it wins me an election or not. That's just what I'm going to do. So feel free, next time you see me riding my bicycle on Hamilton Road, pull me over and say, hey, Lori, what's up with this? And I'll be glad to answer your question. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Will?
Yep.
I see some people here on the C V B. And I know we're deferring that, but I just wanted to make a comment because I know it's a lot of work that's been done and put into where we are now. And I'm glad we have a little extra time. And I think basically however, we end with the details of this, it's important in my mind that these hotels become a reality. And can you imagine, I mean, south of I-20, having, having these options for visitors to our area? And so I just want to say thanks to the C V B for the work you're doing.
Chief, pronounce your last name. Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure I was hearing that. I'm hard of hearing. But I appreciate you being here. I appreciate there's been a lot of comments made to me that they're actually seeing the presence of police cars. You know, up and down. I live out on Jones Ferry, as you're probably aware. And I've seen the first time police cars at least two or three times coming down the road. And I'm not making that as a slight against Chief Little, but that is a difference. And I appreciate that. And I just will reiterate that I am rather concerned about what's going on with Mr. Richardson right now. And I will state that publicly. So if I have to seek legal counsel on my own, I will. So thank you.
So first and foremost, I want to express to Ruby my condolences and condolences on behalf So first and foremost, I want to, uh, express to Ruby my condolences and condolences on behalf of the city. Uh, Ruby lost her mom recently, uh, that's why she's not here tonight, and, uh, having just spent the weekend at a funeral for my wife's stepfather, you just recognize again that that is an incredibly impactful thing, and uh, I am impressed that you're on the Zoom call tonight, Ruby. Thanks for doing that, and again, um, really sorry, uh, about that for you. Couple of other issues, uh, topical things that I just wanted to mention, there's been some conversation lately, again, because this is a subject of a, a lot of consternation at the city council as well. We adopted an ordinance a couple of years ago now to change speed limits in several places in the city. Uh, there are those places where I promise you, if you're walking next to the road and somebody drives by you at the current speed limit, you will not think that that is the appropriate level. Uh, the difficulty with that is to actually enforce speed limit laws, GDOT has to approve them. And GDOT has had a running list of excuses for these two years. First, it was COVID, and they weren't sending people out to do the reviews. Then they wanted us to do a couple of different traffic studies in different places, which we've done. And, and the thing that I keep doing in every meeting and every call and in every email that I'm copied in on is inviting them to come down here and you come stand at the side of the road while I drive by at the speed limit, and you tell me that you think that the speed limit is appropriate. And I, I've talked to the governor, who referred me back to the GDOT commissioner. Uh, I have talked to the GDOT commissioner a couple of times, who absolutely is gonna look into it, and, uh, all of this to say, if we just change the speed limit signs right now, we can't enforce any speed limits. Uh, Kevin was talking today about the fact that we're writing tickets for people doing ninety-five in a forty-five or whatever. If we put a thirty-five mile an hour sign there, that's not approved, we can't write a ticket for the guy that's doing ninety-five. So this is not us sitting on anything. This is us waiting for GDOT to get off their butts and do their job. And I promise you, we are not, we're not just ignoring it. It's, it's one of the most frustrating things that we've got going on right now. But I, I did want people to know, because we recognize that there are a lot of places in the community where the current speed limits are just too high. I also get it, right? I've driven around in southern Georgia in those little towns where all of a sudden it's fifteen miles an hour from fifty-five. I get why GDOT is worried about people setting up speed traps. That's not our goal here. Uh, but a, again, it's, it's just one of those issues that is harder to resolve than people might think. Two other points, you know, we, we have had a couple of comments today about uh, us breaking the law and, and like the way that we're running meetings isn't appropriate and all of that, and, and I mean, I, I hear your comments, uh, I spent a lot of time following up on those comments to make sure that we're not. I promise you, I have the absolute right to extend time in public hearings, for example. I do. And if anybody's been here for public hearings, they see how seriously we take that. We let those meetings go on. If there's twenty people, I'm not cutting it off at ten minutes, right? Because we want that public input. Public hearings are important. It's what's going on next to someone's home. So, uh, you know, if we err, we err on the side of letting people talk more. Now, wanting to make sure that somebody doesn't hog the whole twenty minutes, I think is fair to the other people in the room, right? But, but, uh, uh, again, anybody that's been to our meetings knows that. The other thing too is there are oftentimes issues that come up to council in our work sessions and, you know, where somebody brings up an issue, and if there's a consensus to have a further conversation on that issue, we move it forward to further conversation. A lot of times there isn't that consensus, and, you know, when we've talked about a particular issue twenty times over the last twenty years, and that the overall consensus hasn't changed, don't bring it up again. But sometimes those things shift, right? And just recently, we've gotten to a point again where the consensus is, we want to be talking about the minimum acre requirements, so we are setting that up. Uh, impact fees, another issue like that. We already create huge impact fees for development here by requiring seventy percent preservation, and it is an absolute subject worthy of conversation. We've had those conversations in meetings before. It's come up now again, and, uh, we would have had a, uh, somebody in from the Georgia Municipal Association at the last meeting if it wasn't for their conference to talk to us about that. So don't think that we don't hear, don't think that we don't act. Uh, you know, sometimes the answer may not be what you want, but the people up here are thoughtfully considering those things. I want to thank everybody for coming out. We do appreciate everybody coming to these meetings. I love the fact that there are more people because it's easier when more people hear what's actually going on for the rumors that don't match the reality to be, wait a minute, I was at that meeting, that's not what happened. And so again, I, I appreciate you guys being here for that. Uh, with that, if I could get, uh, motion in a second to adjourn the meeting, please?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at seven thirty-nine. We always end the, uh, meetings with town hall session. We have all of the staff here to answer questions that you've got. Two things about those town hall sessions, we are not going to talk about things that we've already talked about in the council meeting. Kinds of questions.
And they will be using a third-party vendor. I don't know the name, but all the permitting or any, any, um, contact with the city, I think is gonna be through Greystone.
And we haven't gotten any of that contact yet, right? So there's not like permitting going on yet for actual work.
Correct. And I, and I think it's more they'll be notifying us when they're doing the work, but like I said, he just touched base. As far as I know, they haven't started work, and it will be a third-party vendor.
Again, though, if they were doing work to upgrade their transformers as they sit right now, they wouldn't.